There you go.
And so, yeah, the first, as Mickey mentioned, the first item is just the, if you've had a chance to look at the minutes, we would just need a motion for approval.
We'll have to approve.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great.
Thank you. And then next is public comment. We have members of the public here, and if you wish to make any comments, please raise your hands and we'll promote you to panelists so we can hear you speak. And I'm not seeing any raising of hands, so we have no public comments. And then we can move on to the first item on the agenda if everybody's ready. And I'll share my screen. Sorry, it's taking a little bit. There we go. You should see a full screen by now. So today, we're asking you stewardship subcommittee to select and recommend awardees of the American Rescue Plan Act Community Assistance Grant. And asking you to select and recommend them to the city manager who is approved by council to enter into contract with the grantees. But first, before we get started, the city attorney's office would like to have a brief moment to review the complex of interest information. And for that, we have Elizabeth O'Shea.
Thanks, Mickey. Good morning, everyone. So I'm just here, I think you received our conflict of interest memo, and this is just an opportunity for you to disclose any, I believe we're talking primarily about potential conflicts of interest, since this would be a recommendation on funding for the city manager, and the city manager would be making those final funding decisions. So if you or a member of your family, a client or a business with which a member of your family you or a client are associated with could be financially benefited or negatively, excuse me, impacted by a recommendation today, now is your chance to disclose that. And I am happy to answer any questions if there are any. Okay, looks like we're good, Mickey. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So as a refresher, the purpose of the grant is to assist nonprofits to recover from the impacts of COVID-19, or to assist those negatively impacted by COVID, especially those disproportionately impacted. As a reminder, oops, as a reminder, there were five steps to the application process. As the application submitted, staff prescreened those applications. And as promised, we created a matrix with a summary of rankings that you'll see in the next few slides. And your role, city stewardship subcommittee, is to recommend awardees to the city manager. The city manager is then authorized by council to enter into contract and award the grants. And then staff will take care of all the administrative work, like getting the agreement signed, funding, and reporting. The U.S. Department of Treasury provided an easy and simple guideline. Step one is to identify the impact and beneficiary of the funding, and then to relate the response to the impact and confirm that the response benefits those impacted. So we took what the U.S. Treasury provided us as guidelines and aligned that with what the stewardship subcommittee gave us as direction. And at that meeting, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, AHAQ, and Human Rights and Equity Commission, HREC, were also present to provide input. And so based on all that information, staff previewed the applications as follows. We asked if they were negatively impacted and are they, is the applicant a nonprofit organization? If they were, they moved on to the next step. We asked if what they're using the funding for is an eligible use. We had 16 applications and two were disqualified due to ineligible use. And one withdrew because they felt like that the money should go to other organizations that are more directly working with COVID recovery. Staff then scored the remaining 13 applications, and we had simple scoring of like zero for limited to no explanation, three adequate explanation, five exceeds explanation. And we also identified, and the criteria is where we, you know, ask if they were negatively impacted is what they're using it for as eligible. We also identified the prioritized beneficiaries such as the houseless direct service providers and disproportionately impacted communities. And again, disproportionately impacted communities means racial and ethnic minorities, low-income household or family whose income did not exceed 80% median family income, and those who are socially vulnerable community members. And lastly, we looked at appropriate and cost-effective budget and other sources of funding. So what you're about to see in the next six slides are the scoring matrix prepared by staff with funding option ideas. But as a reminder that you do not need to accept staff's rankings or options, you can rank and award as you see fit, consistent with the guidelines and allocated amount. And also, I want to let you know that the team that developed this program are all here, except for Michael Cirque. He has somebody who was here from the city's attorney's office to be here on his behalf with legal advice. But also, the team consists of myself, and then we've got Ben Hemson, who's a business advocate, who's also well-versed in the world of American Rescue Plan Act. We've got Shelley Smith, who's well-versed in the world of nonprofit diversity, equity, inclusion. She's an expert at that, and among other things. And then Tracy, who is our Assistant Finance Director and auditor, and also is our technical guru with regards to the Treasury American Rescue Plan Act Treasury rules. So you have us as a resource if you have any questions as we go through these different slides that summarizes all the different ranking options and fun selection options. So the next slide is a summary of the applicants, the 13 applicants. So we bolded and colored and read the applicants who are direct houseless service providers, as these were prioritized beneficiaries based on direction from the stewardship subcommittee with input from AHAQ and HREC. What's not bolded here, but it's also colored in red, is an organization that will be developing something that also services houseless community members. And I'll just quickly go through each one of these and read their purpose. So we've got the organization that Mount requested and the total score by the staff, and then the purpose of each application project. So Family Kitchen would like to use their funding, if they're awarded, to deliver meals to where people in need are, to mitigate COVID contact and spread. Shepherd's House for houseless nursing screening and shower truck in response to the surge and service demand due to COVID. Family Access Network to use the funds for advocating support to help houseless families regain self-sufficiency in the wake of COVID. Reach, they'd like to hire additional houseless outreach support specialists in response to the surge. And Dawn's House, houseless alternative housing in response to increase in demand due to COVID. Peaceful Presence Project is, they'd like to develop a program for end-of-life service provision to be added to the coordinated care entry, the houseless coordinated care entry for isolated houseless community members. And Boys and Girls Club for their program scholarships. Kids Center for staff salary to support increase in medical evaluation. Treehouse Therapies for training programs in response to the new and increased access needs due to COVID. The children with disabilities are the beneficiaries and insurance does not cover telemedicine. Saving Grace is to maintain survivor navigators in response to increase in cases and lethal cases. Healing Reigns for low-barrier alternative clinical therapy for disproportionately impacted by COVID. Our budget for this community assistance grant is $200,000. The total applications came in at $440,000. So we came up with five different options for awarding, for selecting and awarding. Option number one is to award, to prioritize beneficiaries, the direct houseless service providers. And it so happens that their total number comes up to 200,000, which is within our budget. Or we awarded to the top-ranked based on staff scoring, and that's within the 200,000 budget again. Or award everybody and to be within the $200,000 budget, the request for each one would be scaled down by 45% to 45%, and that's the number. And then we put an extra column for any ideas that you can come up, that you'd like to come up with. Option number four is to award the top ranking now by March 2022 for this run, and then award the rest of the applicants 100% or scale down. And it would need to be sometime in spring, because we would need to go back to council to request for budget adjustment, to request for additional funding. Or option five is to, again, award all in, you know, the first, the first ones to receive it, 100% will be funded now, and then the rest, either you could decide to 100% or scale down the funding, and they, we would need to go back to council for budget adjustment, and they would be awarded sometime in spring. So those are the different options. And again, you don't need to take any of our ranking or options. You can rank and award as you see fit.
And Mickey, just to be clear, this, this option, I just want to go back to that initial ranking that you had. So this, well, no, you can stay there, stay at that option four slide. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that those applications are focused on our houseless community members, and that's, that's what prioritized this option. The Family Kitchen, Family Kitchen, Shepherd's House, Family Access Network, Reach, and Dawn's House were the most directly connected to serving our houseless neighbors.
Thank you. Yes, correct. That is, that, that, that is, this page is to prioritize the, I mean, to award the beneficiaries that the stewardship subcommittee prioritized, and AHAQ and HREC recommended as a priority. And that concludes our presentation, and we'd love to hear your thoughts and answer any questions you might have.
So what, we have another, I guess I'll call it a tranche of ARPA money coming in. When you're talking about the second round of funding, are you talking about taking, potentially taking out of that second tranche of ARPA funding?
From what I confirmed with finance and Tracy, you could correct me if I am no longer correct about this, but it would be from the first tranche.
Okay.
The first seven million, yeah.
There was one point, almost 1.3 million during the budget adjustments that stewardship awarded the spending of the ARPA money that was left in reserve. So there is a little bit of money left. Of course, there's a lot of demands on it, but that could be one thing that could be taken back to council to ask for an increase for this particular.
I mean, it's going to be no surprise what I'm about to say, but I think we should do option five. I think we should do 200K to, you know, our houseless providers. I think that's a really urgent need right now, and I would be in favor of going to council for the other 240K fully fund.
I agree. I think that even though the others don't directly serve our houseless community, I see a lot of connections, for example, with Boys and Girls Club, which I know is one of the highest-ranked proposals that, you know, that's, that's providing child, you know, childcare and enrichment services that a lot of families really will depend on. And the fact that that's a direct scholarship to me makes, makes that especially important. Not to say that any of the others aren't.
Yeah, I'm good with that. I, I'm curious what we're contemplating, and you may have already told us this, Ben, or Mickey, or Eric, but are we doing another round out of the second tranche of this type of funding?
That is.
So, yeah, so the, we will start to do some planning with the stewardship subcommittee, probably in April, to look at how we want to allocate the additional 7 million that we'll receive in May. We have to remind ourselves that we have until, I think, believe it's December 2024 to spend funds. So I think we do want to be strategic with how, how we spend some of these funds. We do have some operational needs that we'll need to balance with community needs, and that will be part of that bigger picture. You do have the option, so I think what maybe, if you're all kind of gravitating towards this option, we have held 1.2 or so million in reserves, as Tracy just mentioned, of the 7 million that we received last May. So we could do a budget adjustment, and you could factor this 240 in that, that current 7 million, the existing 7 million plan. Or you can sort of put that into the mix with a broader plan that we're going to be developing over the next couple of months with the stewardship subcommittee. It's really up to you.
Anthony and Jenna, what do you think about doing that, the latter?
So to clarify, would that, that delay the timeline a little bit, or just would put it into that second tranche of funding?
Yeah, it'd be something that you would put into a menu, and, you know, you most likely make some decisions May-June timeframe. And, and so in terms of timing, I would see, if you're going to really kind of look at this in the context of that bigger picture, there'd be one path that that timeline would result and potentially award later this summer. If you're wanting to do a budget adjustment to the current, and to pull that 1.2 million in reserves, that, that would be done sooner, you know, in the next month or two, to be able to execute. So I think it's a matter of a couple of months, if you're interested in a path towards funding these other applications.
I think considering that these organizations have made applications for, for, you know, projects and needs that are, that are pretty timely, I would, I think I would go for the sooner option, but recognizing that we may not be able to send them all at the full requested amount. Eric, can you remind us of some of the other kind of demands on those reserves, what we might be needing to use those for?
Mickey, do you have, Mickey or Tracy, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I would defer to Tracy, and I believe Carolyn is here to let us know if there are any other already promised.
Yes, I do know some of the budget money was to spend on the renovations for the existing shelters, hotel shelters that we have now. There is going to be the managed camp spending, the utility assistance program, the 1.2, 1.3 million in reserves. I think the expectation was waiting to see where some of those costs, you know, the initial money that was funded with the expectation that the cost would be higher for some of those projects.
I would just add, this is probably the first, this 240 is probably the first formal calculation of a need to tap into the 1.2 million reserve. We know that probably running shelters is going to cost more than we initially thought, but we have other funding sources coming in that are deferring the cost of the renovation, which will open up money for operations at least through December 2024. So I think this 240 is the first request on that 1.2 million in reserves to move out. Formally, we've been talking about it a lot, but this is the first formal one.
And I would say, given where things are in Salem, and we'll talk more about this tomorrow or Wednesday at our council meeting, it looks like most of the legislation that's going to provide some additional funding, both to our pilot program as well as the direct allocation for shelter renovations and operate operations or sanitation, looks like that's coming through. So I'm a little less concerned about, you know, I think if that weren't the case, I would definitely advocate that we delay that, that decision on the 240, but I think there's probably some, we're just not quite there yet. I think by the end of this week, we'll have a clearer picture. So the timing didn't work in our favor to have, you know, maybe you could offer a contingency to say if, if we do have those additional funding opportunities coming from the state that, that you'd feel comfortable moving forward with the 240 and pulling that from the 1.2 million in reserves. So as long as nothing happens in Salem, I would be okay. And things move as we expect, and we have some additional funding opportunities, then I would say we, we'd be fine pulling that from that, those reserves, if council's okay with that.
I think I would prefer option, I mean, it sounds like Megan and Jenna are on board for five. I think I prefer option one with like an internal direction to ourselves that we take this up at the next meeting. And if there's an opportunity to act at that point, refer something back to the full council. I'd be all for it. I think we're probably talking about the same timeframe. We're probably going to meet in.
March.
Yeah, so I guess I, I'm comfortable with one. Happy to be outvoted, comfortable with one, and then give ourselves kind of internal marching orders that we're going to revisit this at our next meeting to see if we can just grab option five. And it's not because I don't think the next level of projects are totally critical to our community. I just know what we have coming right now in terms of budgetary needs. And yeah, it's great, we're getting, we have the potential to be getting a significant allocation from the $400 million package, you know, rumbling along in Salem right now, but that's also going to require, you know, it's going to require additional resources from us. It's not like that's going to be the end of, you know, our, our funding responsibilities. So I think we'll know a lot more next month, and I would, I would say we wait on the next six items there.
You think we'll know more about state funding, Anthony? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're going to know more about state funding potentially on Wednesday.
Yeah, the session ends, I think, the end of this week. So we're just not, you know, this is, this is the time in the session, the short session, where all the, the budget bills are queuing up to, to receive votes. So yeah, I think, I think that, that works fine, too. Just waiting until we have more certainty on the state funding picture before making that decision. I'm, I'm fine with that.
And just for me, I'm not saying if we get the state funding, we will fund all of these. I'm also have a concern that the state funding is going to trigger other additional projects. They're going to need us to lean in. And that may, we may be dipping into the money that, you know, we have for reserves pretty soon. So I would just like to have a clearer picture. I think we can act right now in the top five.
Megan, did you have any additional thoughts on that?
I mean, I see your point, Anthony, but I'm still pretty strongly believe we should, we should do option five.
Yeah, that's fair.
So if we wait until our meeting next month, then is that, I mean, that would delay perhaps by a month or so, or is it not really going to effectively delay our, our funding of projects?
We still have to get on the agenda to do, to do a budget adjustment. Would you plan on doing that at the next meeting, Eric, or a meeting after?
Well, so, yeah, I mean, I typically would, I prefer to group budget, because there's, they're, they're pretty lengthy in terms of requiring notice and actions taking place. So I, in an ideal world, we're, we're planning for a budget adjustment in June. To do one, I need to talk with finance staff to see how quick, if we could just do a small budget adjustment, or to see what flexibility we have. I just don't have that response for you today, but I, I could, I could give you a better idea in March, at the end of March, when our next meeting is.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't want to wait until June, but if it, if, if you're not going to be able to, yeah, if it doesn't seem like we're going to be able to fit it in between, a budget adjustment onto a council agenda between now and the next stewardship subcommittee meeting, then I don't see any reason not, not to wait a little bit more before we, before we finalize that decision.
Yeah, that definitely changes things.
Tracy, unless you had any other information, you might have more, better information on just the process needed to, if we were to do a budget adjustment.
I don't know if this one would be quite as hard, because the money is already budgeted as far as revenues. You don't have the revenue stream as much of an issue. It's just a matter of saying, I'm taking it out of reserves and moving it from one line item to the other. So.
Would that need to go to council, but the, given the, the the amount, would that need to go to council?
Um, I thought it's 10%. So let me check with Melissa and get back with you on that, but it may be below that limit.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that would be good to, to discuss a little bit more if we do.
Yeah, let's, let's put a tab in this and maybe come back. So I don't know, Tracy, if you can try to get a response from Melissa, and we'll revisit towards the end of this meeting, just then we can have better information about what processes require. Because if it doesn't require a budget adjustment, then it, then it, then it really could be executed much, much quicker. At least a budget adjustment that would need to go to council. There, there might be some authority that we have at the administration level. All right, Mickey, let's, so I think what we're going to do is tentatively go with a blending of option one or option five, depending that, that, that additional information from finance, hopefully towards the end of the meeting.
Okay, sounds great. So the next item on the agenda is modernized utility assistance program update from Dana Wilson.
Hi, thank you. I, Mickey, do you need to unshare your screen?
Oops, pardon. There you go.
Hey, thank you. I am Dana Wilson. I am the utility business manager. And I want to give you an update on our utility assistance programs and our efforts to modernize them. And I'll start with just this reminder that last August, there was $200,000 in utility assistance that was fun, that set aside for low-income residential customers. Next month, on the 16th, I will be bringing a grant to council to grant these funds to Neighbor Impact. They will qualify customers through their regular intake process to receive funding. And this is really to address that immediate need in our community to provide relief to residents who are still struggling with the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Over the course of the pandemic, we've seen past due balances continue to grow. Currently, we have about 2,500 customers who've missed three or more payments totaling just under $1 million. And as we begin shifting away from our pandemic practices back to that normal business operations, we'll start addressing these past due balances using the equity framework, working with internal partners, trying to understand who's most effective, and then to mitigate impacts as best we can. I'll talk more about this on our final slide, but first I want to show you a little bit about some of the success, the success with our last program. Last year, we partnered with Neighbor Impact on a temporary COVID-19 assistance program. It was funded through a $25,000 private donation and a $25,000 city of Ben Match. Using the demographic and household reporting, you can see at the bottom some of that information and our own utility billing data, we made a few key changes to this grant that include expanding the services to other water service providers. So anyone living in city limits who meet grants, the grant requirements are eligible. We added other utility services. Previously, it was, these funds were available only to customers who have water service. But we learned that 24% of those arraignment balances are made up of sewer-only customers. So we felt it was important to expand this offering. And we raised the median income from 60% to 80%. This allows us to serve the community more broadly. And on the next slide, I want to give background on our current programs and the considerations we're making for modernizing them. The City of Ben currently has two programs available to low-income customers. The first is a fixed bill discount, and this is available to senior and disabled citizens. It offers a 50% reduction on base fees, which is about $22 a month. We have 174 customers, that's about a half percent of our customer base, who are on this program. The second program is a one-time lifetime credit, has a difficult application process and eligibility requirements. And we've not granted this credit in the past 12 months. As we were looking to modernize our programs, we took the opportunity to look to our next-door neighbor, the Portland Water Bureau, for their best practices. They're recognized as having the most comprehensive programs in the nation. And what we're exploring is everything from bill discounts and payment plans to leak detection, repair services through community partnerships. Whenever possible, we're looking to defer water service shut-offs through a combination of bill management, that's payment plans, levelized billing, and shrinking. That's payment plans, levelized billing, and shrinking the bill through conservation. We're looking at crisis and safety net programs that capture those who are going through a temporary change in circumstances. Maybe a baby, a divorce, or a death. Anyone needing a little bit of help to get over the hump. We're looking to, our our ultimate goal actually is just to provide the tools that help our customers manage their bills. Pay for their services and meet our fiduciary responsibility to collect for the services we deliver. And that sets the stage for moving forward and getting back to businesses as usual. This means that we need to address that $1 million in arrears balances. So you're looking at a timeline that started with the beginning of the pandemic and takes us over the next four months. We had the emergency declaration that suspended collections and shut off. And just as it was set to expire, we had a utility billing software conversion. I I think council has heard that that did cause a delay. We're still working through that delay, but we will be caught up in May. During this time, we have extended a suspension of collections and water service shut-off for utility payments. But we are scheduled to, we're looking to schedule to resume, excuse me, to resume them in July. But in that meantime, what we want to do is engage on a comprehensive public outreach campaign. Social, print, and news media, bill messaging, direct outreach, inbound phone calls. We started an account management inbound campaign to sign people up for payment plans, or we actually will be in the coming few weeks. Anyone that's on a payment plan will not be subject to collections or water service shut-offs. So really getting that message out about that July date is our focus. So we can get customers in good shape before we resume collections and water service shut-offs. And we're using this $200,000 grant to help us inform on. Who these customers are that will need our regular assistance programs that we can, as we're building them out. We can be sure that we're using a little bit of the best practice that we see from Portland Water Bureau and other agencies. But also really tailoring it to meet the needs of our community. And you'll be seeing more of me as we make progress on this, on these programs. I'm not asking you to make any decisions today, but I am happy to answer any questions. Have I stopped sharing?
No.
I'm not sure I know how. Oh, I got it here. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dana. I mean, I, I think it's important to recognize, and I know we all do, but. That this is a huge part of helping people stay in their homes, and it's completely consistent with our focus on. Affordability and addressing houselessness. So thanks for. Uh, thanks for all these efforts. I think it's super important, and we got to look at this holistically.
Absolutely.
Hey, thank you, Dana. So the next person on the agenda, the next item is transient room tax update by Ben Henson, Henson, sorry.
Close enough, Mickey. Thanks. Hello, councilors. So you received a memo from me last week, really detailing a potential path forward here and just. For anyone on the call watching, just a reminder, this, these are kind of one-time funds, transient room tax funds that we're talking about. That have been collected since 2017 as the city went through some legal challenges around the use of. What is the equivalent of 4.2% of our room tax collections each year? So that. That number adds up, and right now we're sitting on. About $2 million, or we will be by the end of this fiscal year, that could be allocated to. Tourism-related facilities, and that's certainly been councils' ask. Or request to this point, find a way to get these funds out into the community to develop tourism-related facilities, just a. A point I want to differentiate here too, going forward, the council direction. Around these funds is we'll allocate 35.4% of our TRT funding through our destination marketing and management. Operator contract going into the coming fiscal year. So. As I mentioned, one-time funds here, but we're really looking for, or have been looking for, both Eric and I, a path forward. To invest these one-time funds now under some of the guidance that you provided at your last meeting. So getting the funds out fairly quickly. Finding an urban-facing area to invest these funds in tourism-related facilities. Uh, and something that's at least some, or some identifying projects that are somewhat transformative as well, right? We're not really going for small stuff, but big things that both visitors to Bend. And the public will notice, or residents of Bend, I should say, will notice as these investments are made. So with that in mind, Eric and I have both spoken with the Bend Parks and Recreation District. They are getting ready to start their Drake Park project right now, their 7.3 million dollar project. And there's an interest there in us piggybacking on these $2 million in funds that we're sitting on. Allocating them to parks under an intergovernmental agreement, or at least allocating them toward potential facilities in the Drake Park project. Really with an eye to identifying additive developments in the Drake Park project and in the downtown and Drake Park area. That um. That could be tourism-related facilities going forward. So there's a little more detail in the memo here, but really. I think this is a bit of a litmus test for us. Are we on the right track here, or are we not? Um, in terms of how we move forward with getting these funds out the door. A couple of other key points to mention here, I included it in the memo, but would really lean on our partnership with Visit Bend and the Bend Sustainability Fund to help identify projects. Involved that could qualify as tourism-related facilities going forward. So. Parks would kind of come to a sounding board, if you will, with Visit Bend and their and their team and city representation to. Determine if a if a project gets a thumbs up and then can receive funding or a thumbs down. And this is where I think we. We're operating without full clarity at this point, because. All of these projects haven't all been identified, right? But there's the potential for things like restrooms, attractions. Um, and restrooms are a tougher nut to crack, but. Um, new investment in the area, trail connections and the like. So I'll I'll wrap up with this. Really, I'm just looking for your feedback today and to know if we're on the right track and we've been forward. Wrap up with kind of the paths that we've been looking at. So of course, one is an IGA with BPRD. Um, we could certainly set aside these funds. Um, and wait for opportunistic projects to arise that the city could invest in, but we are getting. Questions from the tourism stakeholders that remit these funds about when these funds will be released and what they're going to be spent on. So this gives them some certainty. Uh, as well, and there's an unclear timeline on when a project may arise that we could invest in. Uh, which really doesn't align with your stated goals around moving these funds out into the community fairly quickly. And then finally, we, there is always the option to to park these, these dollars in the Ben Sustainability Fund with some sidebars around it. The the feel I got from the three of you at the last meeting. Was maybe that's not number one on your list, but really. Potentially a backup going forward. So. Uh, if you give the green light today, we would go and start work on an intergovernmental agreement with BPRD that would have to go to council. And I'll wrap up there. I just really love your feedback. The memo is pretty short. It's on the agenda if anyone wants more detail and. I love your feedback and questions.
So in general, we think this is the quickest way to get a tourism bathroom built is by working with parks?
Yeah, and calling out a bathroom specifically is a tough one. As I, as I mentioned to Councilor Perkins last week. People don't go downtown to go to the bathroom, right? It's an accessory facility to. To other things, but I think that's part of the discussion we can have with parks is that. If you built a bathroom, is there a tourism-related facility associated with that that bathroom? Does the bathroom potentially offset another clear tourism-related facility? Um, that we could invest in with the $2 million that's already in the scope. These are discussions we'd have to have, but I I think being clear that restrooms are a goal. Is something. That we could include in this IGA.
So I guess it's not really a goal for me. I mean, people who don't live here have to go to the bathroom somewhere. They don't have a house here by definition, so if they're visiting. I mean, of course, they have, maybe they have a hotel, maybe they're not, maybe they're just staying for the day. But. I I guess that's, for me, having a tourism hub that includes bathrooms is dispositive of this. Uh, like, it it's the one thing that I think we. Um, should give you clear direction on if everybody agrees. And I'm fine with whatever approach we use. If we use an MO. An MOU with the parks, I think that's great. It sounds like that's the quickest way to get. Tourism hub with restrooms in it built. And. And and then I think when we're negotiating that agreement. You know, I, I don't, I don't want to be unreasonable with parks, but we need a timeframe and a deadline for when that's going to be built.
Sure, and I I think that's part of what we would work into this IGA as well, progress payments. I want to be clear here too, because I think I kind of glossed over it at the beginning. One of the reasons we're kind of pursuing this is. Parks has the project identified, they're they're large projects. They have contractors and design professionals on board. There's the efficiencies there, but there's also the fact that. This and that, that investment is being made fairly quickly. Being able to bring in this money on top of it means we could leverage those existing contracts and. Potentially get something built in short order. But yeah, I don't think it's unreasonable to to call out restrooms is something that you'd like to see as part of this project, and that's good feedback if anyone agrees.
Ben, I think I really like this plan. I think it's really strong. I'm on board with it. Um, you know, I have concerns about mentioning things specific at this point, you know, especially if it doesn't tie in directly with the use of the funds. I I see the specifics as being important, but not the focal point of this money. And, you know, bathrooms are of course something that tourists would use, but that isn't the reason why they come to Bend or downtown or Drake Park. Uh, so I just want to make sure that we're sort of continually aware of of. As we move forward of what this money is supposed to be for.
And I think we had talked about. You know, the the tourism, whatever, welcome center, whatever we're calling it, in downtown, and it's helping people. Understand how best to navigate downtown, you know, that navigating on a bike isn't. Very efficient or safe. And and so kind of helping people make that entry into the more urban environment. It, I I don't think we discussed it at our last meeting or when we discussed this previously, but another place where I think that. Some wayfinding or some sort of welcome materials could be helpful is on the south end of. Where the River Trail crosses into the river, that riverfront. Uh, neighborhood. Um, you know, that's a place where I just last week saw. People who seem to be visitors kind of wandering around on the west side of Galveston, trying to figure out where to cross, and we have a, an issue with. Um, the sidewalk that kind of ends there for a minute due to that. Large retaining wall in the right of way, and so there's kind of some unsafe places around there for for people who are. On foot or on bike, and so I think some some clarity and wayfinding around there. Making that connection between. Between the park facility and the, and the city's. Kind of. Regular transportation infrastructure could be, could be helpful. So I want to make sure that's within the scope of of where this IGA could go.
That's great feedback, and I think wayfinding is one of those investments that makes perfect sense is a tourism-related facility. I guess where it gets tough, a lot of folks want specifics right now, right? And. We don't have designs. We don't, they have idea, we have ideas, but they aren't conceptual. Where we would lean on our relationship with Visit Bend is then kind of taking that. Uh, spinning out a concept into something a little more concrete. Saying wayfinding here, you know, X, Y, Z, other investments, and then they would be able to go to their stakeholders and really get that. But yeah, I think that makes, that makes sense.
And then we would be generating those ideas in partnership with parks, or would parks kind of be. Telling us where things fit into their project and then getting back to us, or is that just going to be kind of a collaborative process? How do we see that going forward?
Yeah, I think probably more so the latter with the city providing. Input and. Um, maybe a level of what you'd call oversight as well. They they certainly have projects identified that are beyond the scope of their investment right now, and Eric, jump in if I'm speaking out of turn here.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, we we've done this before. You'll remember, we did a partnership of. Project with both Parks and OSU on the round, the construction of the roundabouts. At Columbia and Simpson and Columbia in Colorado. I mean, this is something. We'll we'll use a lot of that language here, although this will be a project that parks will take the lead on, where the city is a partner. That was the reverse of, you know, what we just went through. So we have a lot that we. Uh, can can learn and apply in terms of sharing risk, making sure our program elements are included. Um, and and are prioritized. So I I think I envision coming back to this group with a draft IGA. That will really be that document that expresses the council's intent of the element, the programmatic elements that Ben outlined in his memo. As well as how the the timing of how to incorporate all this, all this into that project. I think there. I believe that they're going to try to get under contract here. They are under contract in terms of getting it constructed later this fall. Is that correct, Ben?
I think so.
Yeah, so. You know, I, we'll see where there's the ability to adjust some of their timelines and how they can. Put this all together within their existing contract, or if they have to. Board a different contractor, there's a lot of questions that we still need to work through that we're not necessarily in control, that that we've got to get input from Parks and Rec on that.
In general, support. Um, and thank you. That's good feedback. I made notes. Well, we'll try to incorporate your feedback around wayfinding and restrooms.
I would just say, if at some point it feels like we're not going to be able to. Make a deal with parks to get this done, like, I I don't want to wait. I I want to quickly pivot and. You know, find another path to get this tourism hub. Planned and developed as quickly as possible.
Great, yeah. And I I know that the Visit Bend staff are watching this as well. There. There may be avenues with other partners that have the ability to execute on things like this as well. This was one that just. With the the way timing lined up, it seemed like a good way to. At least take a shot here. And maybe after we get more in-depth in discussions, we find out. One of the 2 million could align with this, and we have to start looking for a home for some of the other funds as well, but. Want to make sure we were heading down the right path.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Eric, I was wondering if you wanted to circle back with Tracy before we move on to Za or?
Yeah, so we did. I did receive a a response from finance. It it would require a budget adjustment anytime that we're accessing money from reserves, no matter what the amount. Um, that does need to go to council. So there was a percentage, but unfortunately, this does not qualify. So I think the plan to just come back. Uh, I I really don't see this as a standalone budget adjustment, given all the work that would need to happen. I think it would make more sense to group this with other items. Um, I would just need to work on a more detailed plan, but which I can bring back to you at the next meeting in late March. So if you're okay with that, we'll proceed, we'll proceed with awarding. So just to clarify, we'll proceed with awarding the funds. And get the money out the door in the next week or so, as kind of Mickey outlined, to those. That were focused on houseless services. Um, that prior, we we've, you've prioritized that, and then the remaining funds will give you a more detailed plan for how we might be able to execute that at the end of March.
Right. So option number one, and that at the March 28 meeting, stewardship subcommittee meeting will revisit, revisit the action for the rest of the applicants.
Yep.
Um, and then the next item on the agenda. Is Zab Borha. He is the Community Relations Manager. And today he's going to be presenting community equity and partnership assessment and his recommendations and next steps.
Welcome, it's Zavi, by the way, Mickey, just.
Oh, sorry, Zavi.
Zavi, welcome.
Am I sharing my screen? Can I get a thumbs up? Yeah, perfect. Yeah, and no worries on my name yet. Zav, Xavier, Zavi, it is fine. Yes, I'm the Community Relations Manager with a focus and emphasis on. Um, equity and partnerships, and I'm here to give just an update on my work to date. Um, and go from there. And good morning, councilors and Eric. So the assessment. Sorry, just moving this. The council that I'm operating under is to lower barriers to engagement and to improve access to city services. Um, working with specifically underrepresented community members, so identifying the barriers to participation in our city government and also ways in which they can be removed and or reduced. So I've conducted an assessment that will inform an outreach and communication strategy and structure. That improves opportunities for community members to access and connect with the city. Develop a prioritization plan for our Spanish language materials and services, and also expand and increase partnerships with our underrepresented groups. Just kind of setting the stage. So just before I jump into those three things, just over here off to the side. I've started with the city in late October, so for the past three months, I've worked with around 30-plus organizations and around 50 folks. Um, so underrepresented groups. So I just want to be clear when I mention underrepresented groups who I'm speaking about, unless I directly identify or speak about. So underrepresented groups. So I just want to be clear when I mentioned underrepresented groups who I'm speaking about unless I directly identify or speak about an individual identity underneath this group or this umbrella, which would be folks with lower socioeconomic status, veterans, BIPOC, folks with disabilities, LGBTQ, Spanish-speaking community members and House's community members. My methodology was to meet with organizational leaders in our community that already work with these groups. So one-on-one meetings and invitations to their group meetings to do a presentation on my work and my wonderings. And also put together a specific Spanish-speaking sounding board. So these were organizations and folks that work specifically and directly with our Spanish-speaking community members. And the three questions that I asked to kind of start off our conversations after our presentations or again on those one-off meetings were, what has been your relationship with the city of Bend? What are and are there opportunities to collaborate with your organization? What does representation from the city of Ben look like? And then what would you like to see done better or be done? And I won't go through each group, but these are just the list of the community members that I worked with or community groups. And I've categorized them into underrepresented organization groups, kind of at large. Spanish-speaking community organizations. So again, individual organizations that work specifically with Spanish-speaking populations. And then I put over here, organizations that work with Spanish-speaking representatives, but also have some overlap in other areas within the communities. I think like Saving Grace, Neighbor Impact are great examples of that. And I was also able to reach out to a handful of other municipalities, such as the city of Woodburn, Hermiston, Hillsborough, stuff like that. This next slide is just a fun way as to kind of how we got here, how I got here. So this is just a show of the process. So I collected themes from those questions and with those grew more times. And the next slide will actually show. Hold on, I'm getting this thing. This is your internet's unstable. So make sure I'm good. The next slide will show these themes categorized with some of the themes underneath them. So we can see here, educate and inform on city services. So a lot of folks were unsure, unaware as to what our services exactly were and they're overlapped with other agencies in our region. So like a Bend 101 was called out for one of those themes. Identified there was too much language. A lot, a lot of our material tends to be very wordy. I think surveys are a great way, especially in a pandemic, as you do like non, non-contact, quick way to get information from constituents. But I think folks, especially in the underrepresented communities are kind of tired of another survey. Or being able to have alternative methods to that. Visuals was called out as well. So again, too wordy, maybe pairing those, those words, limiting those words and adding some visuals. The next two right here are similar, but I think their approach is very different, which is why I've separated them. So build a personal relationship with our target audience. So be a better partner, not always leading with what we want, what we need. This one was very interesting as well because there's no, like it doesn't stay like three months, four months, nine months, but it takes time to build a relationship. Then collectively work together. So understanding that there's a lot of other agencies in our, in the Bend area that are also looking to engage the, the specific communities. So working with them to better understand and engages audiences at large. Maintain consistent presence with the community. So this is just being at events, knowing what's going on in our community. Having a place where community events can be shared. That way we were able to maintain that presence with the community. And kind of similar to kind of it takes time, but take it slow, be authentic. Again, we're just showing up, showing support and just kind of learning of like what these orgs are, just what the city is up to. Other notes that captured didn't really have a place here where some folks felt that there was no relationship. I don't look at this as a negative. I think this is just an opportunity for us to now reengage and rebuild that or build that with them in mind or with the community in mind. People called out for bilingual staff. I heard this one a lot, which was a community center or a multicultural center. And then dedicated resource, dedicated resources, which I interpreted as I see internal city staff and employees as dedicated resources because those are folks that are doing a lot of this work for me to have a better understanding as to what's going on internally to then kind of help be, serve as a conduit out in the community. And I'll just go to the next slide just for the sake of time as well. But the next slide will show some proposed projects from those themes. So an education component, so a Bend 101 campaign in English and in Spanish. So having videos and brochures. And so I am working with the county and the parks specifically on this because I think those entities get confused the most with our services. So creating some sort of brochure with all of our services outlined, again, kind of English and Spanish. We are doing this internally with communications as a English language update. So simplifying our language to an eighth grade level, which also helps with translation. Folks here are aware that we are doing an equity mapping, or at least Anna's team is. So I'm working with her and the folks there with the equity mapping. Monthly newsletter with those partners. So a lot of those partners that you saw outlined in two slides before, working with those groups to create a newsletter on my end to give to them. This was just like kind of a very low barrier way to engage social media. So for myself to have access to our social media and just kind of, you know, liking, commenting on our organizations or our partner organizations pages. These two work together and so a community events calendar. So right now I am working with parks in the library to kind of figure out what this looks like and where the shared location of this would be, but essentially just a community events calendar where organizations and partners can put their events on one shared area. Working with that is the community event, outreach and community celebration, celebrations. Just want to make clear that those are two very different things that, and that they will be area-specific, so them graphically specific. And then again, separate. So community outreach events, kind of things that we are needing or wanting. And then community celebrations, just being, these are two things that are being worked on right now, again, with the library and the Parks District. Starting at the end of May to kind of put a lot of stuff on the calendar for the summer moving forward, for having outreach events. And of course, just kind of seeing and looking at what COVID looks like with those as well. Develop, so that court, that Spanish subgroup that I put together, meeting with those folks quarterly, just to kind of get updates on what the needs are at, in this moment with this group that they are working with specifically. And also being able to tie this in with our community outreach efforts with this group to work together with these two components right there. And then something that I'm working on is our Spanish translation prioritization plan, which looks like a City of Ben Spanish translation resource guide that will act as an internal memo that folks can kind of go through when and if they're having wonderings about our Spanish translation materials. And then a public safety info. This was one, I didn't really necessarily put on a theme, but this is one I heard probably about every group that I worked with. So myself working with PD and FIRE just more closely, just to ensure that we are getting that information out to the right channels. And with that, thank you. And I'll take any thoughts or questions and I don't see anybody, so I will stop sharing unless I, folks want me to refer to a slide.
I was just gonna say, thanks Avi. This is, this is super helpful and informative and there's a lot of really rich feedback in there. So. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Zavi, did you get? Can you identify specific feedback that you got from HRAC? Or is there like ideas from HR receipts for us to improve processes? Or have they gotten to that point in their work yet?
I would say no, only in the sense, but yes, in the sense of communication as far as identifying, amplifying voices for they're putting together a calendar for Communications Department that identifies days and or months that we'd like to highlight. So that coincides with kind of elevating and working with community voices and building that relationship with them, which I think is really great and valuable. To then get, you know, information specifically on, you know, like Stevenson's Road projects or any product kind of moving forward. So kind of again, highlighting and elevating yeah, community voices.
And Anthony, they're also sort of through the, through their shared governance model are, are having, going to have an actual like communications liaison person at HRAC as well. The internal group.
Great. And then I myself act as the liaison for our department with Human Rights and National Commission.
Great.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thanks.
Thanks, councilors. And happy Monday and have a great rest of your week.
Thanks, Avi.
And that's, that's all the items we have on the agenda. Yeah, we, you get an hour back and the next stewardship subcommittee meeting is on March 28th, Monday. For, and we have three items on the agenda already. We have Michaela on Neighborhood Association Assessment, Cassie on Home Energy Score and Cassie in the ECC. And then Anna Allen regarding oh gosh, she, she was gonna for all the advisory groups.
All right. Just a quick check in. Are we meeting your needs? Or are there things that you want to see on future agendas that you, you know, that
I think we're good.
Yeah. Just a quick personal timing note. So it saved me an email. I think I had indicated that I, I have a standing meeting that, that ends at 11:30 on the last Monday of the month. So if we could push our start time to 11:30 for future meetings, if that works for everyone, that would be great. And it seems like maybe if we just stick with 11:30 to one, that might be sufficient, but we'll see.
Yeah, let's, we'll plan on that.
Thank you for that information. And that's perfect for the next meeting, 11:30 AM to 1 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.